Good evening, welcome to the October 16th study session. I ask that all of you either turn off your cell phones or put them on silent. We've got four items on the agenda, then we have a special meeting, a short special meeting.
I can never seem to get these to call in time to get them into your hands. So I apologize, but I wanted to provide some basic information about progress the library is making and where we are with a few different things. The first page is summary. We've done a lot of things in the last quarter, the last half year to improve services to the public. One thing we did was remove limits on the number of DVDs, CDs, and video games a user can borrow. We were one of the last libraries in the whole area to limit it to now to six. We never had a limit on the number of books or the number of audio books that a patron could borrow. I think the, these limits were inherited from the days when CDs or all those things were really expensive. And actually now they're cheaper than a book. So we dropped that limit, then put us in line with other libraries in the area, including Aggison, Baser, Bonner Springs. This will also speed up our circulation process because we don't have to literally count the number of items on a screen when someone wants to borrow because it will come up with more than they're allowed. And then they stand there, "Oh, I want this one, I don't want that one." So this will also speed up service for everybody because we want to have those backups at the circulation desk. We're offering a digital-only card now. We have a lot of people who want to use library resources like eBooks or e-audio books or Lynda.com or some of the other systems that we offer remotely that don't want to borrow cards, that don't want to borrow materials. So we, and it's a little harder to get a card that you use to borrow materials because we have to ask more questions. You have to have proof of address and things like that. This will streamline the process for people that just want to use our electronic resources. They're never going to have an overdue item, so we don't have to email them anything. We don't have to notify them under reserve is here. All they need to do is have that so that they can either log in from home or very quickly and easily come to the library and on their own, get onto our computers, use our internet access, borrow a laptop inside the library. That's the only item that we'll be able to borrow on that card. They can, if they choose later, convert it to a full-access card so they can borrow material. But at that point, they would have to provide the proof of address and the other, take the other steps that we have always required for a traditional library card. We began offering that. Our new website is now up. It started, we launched it on October 8th. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it. It's visually a great improvement over what we had before. It's far better organized. We reviewed every little piece of that thing, literally every word on that website. The only thing we're having some trouble with is formatting with a couple of our documents because when they, they look right, but then they don't look right. So we're still fighting through some of those issues where the formatting on our strategic plan in particular, the spacing just doesn't transfer or transmit and look as smooth as we would like it to. But that's up and running now. It has a lot of additional content, a lot of things in there that are focused on our main mission, which is for the next three years to breed the preschool or sort of learning. We're linking websites. We're providing those through in a couple of different places. So the parents of young children have online resources that they can use and their children can use. It's appropriate for them to read stories, to find information, provide tips and things like that about how they can bring literacy into their households for their, for their youngest children. A new service, I don't, are you familiar with Lynda.com?
I use it for graphic design classes.
This is something that we had entertained a couple of times on our own. It was simply too expensive. Our regional library, Neckles, however, has purchased it and they're offering it through library websites to all of the Neckles membership, which includes our library. So it's a, it's a great resource for online training. They have various levels of expertise. You can start with a beginner, an intermediate, or, or an advanced training session. Their early focus was on technology, so that's where a lot of people could go to learn about using different software packages, all about Microsoft things. They've really expanded what they offer and the kind of training that they do. It's very nice. It's, it's very professionally done. There are a lot of free sources out there, but none of them are as, as comprehensive as, as well-done as Lynda. And it's not just 10 minutes here and 10 minutes there. You can, some of these courses are days and hours' worth of time. So some people that are building the resumes can come in and use this so the next time they go to an interview, you can say, "I've successfully completed this course on Lynda.com." Some of them offer certificates so that you can tell a prospective employer, "I know this software and here's the proof that I do because I have had this training." It's a, it's a fair alternative for people who can't afford to go to school to get it. It'll be accessible to everybody with a library card. We are planning a series of sessions, training sessions at the library. We're calling a date with Lynda to introduce the public to, to the system. Take them through the basic steps, walk them through how you register, how you get your account, how your library card can be used to access this information. So we're really looking forward to using that also and training at the library. So part of what we want to do when we, when we meet people that just want to know how Lynda works, we'd like to begin getting, we're going to get information about what kind of training would you like to see done at the library? And use that as a basis to help us train and provide a tool for us to do adult training and for digital literacy. We have a new, I don't, I think I might have mentioned, we have a new youth services supervisor and we just hired her, but Hayden Murphy started and has been doing a great job. She's, she's still learning the ropes. She has been doing a lot of learning about collection development and other things like that. Her background is in academic libraries. So she really wanted to do a career change, so she's working with kids now and is enjoying that tremendously. So we're good to have our, good to have our administrative team fully reconstituted and that work.
Is she the one who, excuse me, is she the one that work with the teenagers?
She is in charge of all the youth services. We do have a specific young woman named Leigh Anne who works specifically with young adults. So Hayden is overseeing all of the youth services for preschool all the way up through, basically through 18-year-olds. So I don't know if you've met her. She was at our, she was at the Halloween party we just had for kids.
I don't know.
So she's, she's doing a great job for us. It's, like I said, it's good to have someone on that team again because we went through our entire summer reading program without a person in charge of that department. So a whole bunch of us kind of, all, all that activity was farmed out and it, and it went pretty well. But it's good to have that all back and sort of in one house now, one person in charge. Our open the door to literacy is, is kind of the theme that we've adopted for our emphasis on youth literacy. And I don't know if you've seen our, we were, had some ads up on the billboard on the corner of Fourth and, or Cherokee and Spruce to advertise this. It's, it's been pretty successful. The attendance at new programs for preschool, children and parents is increasing. Use of our web resources that I mentioned before for that audience, again, those targeted websites is increasing. Our Books for Babies program has reached 40 new families since we launched it in June. And we are in the process of finalizing our 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program. We'd like to get that launched in January. We have an outreach person who's going to begin working with daycares and possibly schools or churches, anyplace where, where kids gather. We're working out a schedule now, but it should be, we're looking for, to have at least a couple of days a week where we have this employee ready to go out and we already have daycares and other people who say, "We would love to have you come and do a story hour, do a program in my daycare." There's, I think it's the northeast, no, it's not northeast, it's central Kansas library system has these great kits, which are basically story hour programs in a box. And they have about two dozen of them. So that it has all the material, all of the activities, relates all of the things that you do during this program to the skills that the kids are retaining. So that'll be where we start. Instead of trying to reinvent this or invest a lot of money in, in developing these programs ourselves, they're already out there, they're already time-tested and proven. And we will begin doing that. And we'd like to start, launch that in, in January, once we can get some scheduling issues worked out. But the goal is to bring library services to young children whose parents possibly can't take them to the library because maybe mom and dad are working. If they live, if they're, they're too young to come to the library on their own or even some older kids that live farther down the road can't make it. But we're going to begin scheduling these things and like to see it take off. I imagine we, we already have a lot of people interested in our, in our visits. On the second page is some basic library data. And I think there's probably nothing more boring than regurgitating a lot of information you have in a spreadsheet in front of you. But I would like to point out a few things. Our overall CIRP increased by 4% from the last quarter, compared to the third quarter in 2017. Use of electronic resources continues to lead the pack as far as a rate of growth is concerned, which is another reason why we wanted to create these data-only cards. We have been in contact with Danielle Deon, the librarian at University of St. Mary, and she would like us to come on campus and get library kids into the hands of the college students. And I think this is a great use for those cards because it kind of saved what might be disorganized in college student from accidentally borrowing something that they never return and then they're blocked with a data-only card. They can get access to all the online tools they need, but they'll never get any fines or fees. I remember what it was like to be in college. You have a DVD in your room, your roommate borrows it, a friend borrows it, who knows where it goes. You know, you go home for Christmas break and what did I do with that? So those data-only cards will be-
I didn't know what a DVD was.
Reel-to-reel. Seriously.
So that was, that I think will be a great tool for those kids. Again, it'll, it'll save them from, from themselves, I think, in some cases. The computer users, we're keeping track of our wireless net, wireless network users. And we've had over 1,600 people in the last quarter log into our wireless network, which seems like an odd thing to, to measure as a library service, but it is. That's the, one of the things that we noticed. More and more people come into the library with their own devices, so they don't need our computers. They don't, they don't log in as often as they used to on their hardware computers because everybody has an affordable portable device and they're using our network for that. So if you see somebody out in their parking lot, I'll, I'll come in in the morning. It, it starts, it wakes up at 8:30 and goes to bed about half, right around about half an hour before we leave. But there'll be people out there in the parking lot. They don't come in the library, they're just waiting for our wireless network to fire up so they can do their, do their business, do their stuff.
Can you count them on your stats?
They, they're tracked. They are tracked. Everybody, everybody that logs in is kept track of by the, by the Cisco resources that we have. Our program attendance, children's program attendance was up 14%. We had a really healthy summer reading program. It was great to see all the kids come in the library and enjoy themselves. They had a bucket drumming. The, the theme was libraries rock, so a lot of music-related activities. And one was a bucket drumming troupe that a bunch of young adults did and is, every week they have practice next to my poor assistant director's office. So whenever I call her on the phone, I'll hear, "Ba-ba-ba-ba-ba-ba." I knew that they were right next door practicing. Again, our open the door to literacy, and I'll talk about that. We have some more data for our strategic plan. We, we do website analytics using Google Analytics. And again, that's, that's another non-traditional way of looking at the way the library serves communities. It certainly wasn't around when I was a kid growing up. But we've had, in this last quarter, 24,000 different sessions, over 15,000 users, 36,000 page views. So it's a, it is really an important tool as we, and that's one of the main reasons why we wanted to, to upgrade it and to provide really solid content and to review what we have because it is really a place where people go. For our strategic plan, we've offered lap sit stories hours since January of this year. And it's grown slowly over time. It's up 8%. The attendance is up 8% from last quarter. Our evening story hour has been pretty popular. And again, that's designed for parents who work during the day, can't make it to a regular daytime story hour. That attendance is up about 40%. We've found suppliers of low-cost books for the incentives were, we're pricing around for t-shirts now. I've been negotiating with a couple of folks to get t-shirts. The plan is to give each child who joined, who starts the program, a t-shirt with 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten logo, our little library logo as an incentive, as a reminder, and as something that when they wear it to the store, to a family reunion or whatever, hopefully people will say, "What's that?" And they'll, they'll point it to the library. Again, our outreach is something we want to launch in, in January. The total number of page views for our early literacy pages on our website is up 37%. The most popular views in that area are the local early learning programs and services. We have a brochure and other links to not only our, not only library resources, but other organizations like Tiny K and Head Start and, and other resources that people have of access to in the city. Early learning resources, which is where we again have, have dropped a lot of links and websites to really, I think valuable, useful tools that parents have online to help their kids learn to read. And our literacy plan itself, which I wish it would look nicer. We're trying to get that, that formatting right. We have added, as, as again, part of our plan, we want to continually build the type of online resources for literacy. We've added a storyline online, Unite for Literacy, and Book Flicks in the last quarter. So again, those links, we're constantly looking for new sites that are not, that don't require membership. They're not going to invade somebody's life. They're not going to get them on. We try really hard to make sure that if people go to our website, they're not going to find themselves on these mailing lists or getting bombarded with a bunch of junk mail they don't want. And really valuable resources that are, we carefully review. We've promoted, we've done, I think, an excellent job promoting all of our programs. We have public service desks. We've, we're really doing a lot of work with community organizations and agencies to visit schools and do things like that, I know. I'll be at, I'm trying to figure out, with this face, I'm either a pirate, a lumberjack, or a prospector on Saturday to distribute hundreds and hundreds and pounds of kids, candy for kids and brochures and things like that for the library. And Cindy McGuire will be at the Twin City-
Twin City Initiative.
Twin City Initiative. So we'll have two different things we're doing that day. We've made arrangements to speak with school officials. We're going to meet, they have a quarterly adminis, or a monthly administrative meeting. We plan to use that especially to interview the elementary school principals to what we're doing to reach out to youth and improve literacy skills. We've had a, we visited the Scott Kessler School on Thornton and Fifth. I can never remember the name.
Second Avenue and Thornton?
Yeah.
Anthony.
Thank you. I am so glad. So we were there for their family night. Hayden and I are youth services supervisors. So we're doing our best to remind people of the importance of libraries and, and build relationships with as many organizations as we can.
Those libraries from the, from the schools and the Leavenworth School District, did they, did they ever reach out to you for any support or?
Not strictly speaking support, but they help us coordinate. Every year we do a, a library card drive in the schools and those people are great for helping us get the word out, getting the applications out, getting information back in. Part of what we do, we, one of our employees is also a school employee. She's a great conduit for information, so we're constantly feeding information out into the schools to try to remind people. I think especially with Lynda.com, we have a great opportunity with the Youth Achievement Center, with Trio, with some of the other programs that are out there, working with teens.
Richard Allen, yeah, Richard Allen too.
So we, we want to be able to, to work with those organizations, to train those people or go to their meetings and when they have, if they have got an hour or when they're going to have all their kids in the room, we can bring a laptop down and as long as we can get on their website, their network, we can, we can introduce them and show them to what these things are.
How are you distributing the books for babies? Or is it just right there? Are you doing it through the hospital where if the babies are born?
The babies books, we have a kit that we, well, put in a box and the hospital calls when they need more.
That's why I wondered, that's the best way to do it, yeah.
So I, I take them there. I'm surprised they haven't asked for more because September and I, I think October and September in that order are number one birth months, but I guess their supplies are holding out. But each one comes with a, a book, brochures and things about the library, of course, information about tips and resources for early literacy. And Penguin Publishing gave us a freebie. We didn't expect little ones. He said, "A born reader or a born writer."
Oh, that's great.
They have a little, something to put on the, on the baby. And the nurses and everyone at the hospital were really enthused about it because many of them had worked in hospitals and offered this. And that was not something that was being done locally. So they're really happy to do it and we enjoy being able to reach those parents.
How long has that program been in effect?
We started it in June. Again, it's, it's one of the ideas, one of the initiatives. We started with our focus on, on preschool learning. You just can't start them young enough. You can't.
I firmly believe that if you read the babies, even in the womb or right after they're born, they'll retain that, they'll learn faster.
We did that with our, with our little makers. Now the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten, part of what we want to do is, is everyone, every child will get a t-shirt when they start. And then every 200 books, if the idea is to read 1,000 books before kindergarten, we figured 200 is kind of a nice, you know, one you have 200, two, as long as you do 200 a year, by the time you hit kindergarten, you'll, you'll get to that number. But every child that reads 200 books will get invited to a special event. They'll get a free book, either a board book or a picture book or whatever age-appropriate material is, will work for them. And again, it's just an incentive. It's a way to keep their interest. It's a way to, to let them physically have something that they can have, can, can borrow and read or can take home and read and have on their own shelves. Again, to give the parents something that, that they can read to their children. So this is all, and this is being paid for through our donations. We're using our gifts and memorials funds for that. And we have, we've had identified a couple of sources for very inexpensive copies of these books, but they're, it's scholastic. So you know, they're not going to fall apart. They're not cheap things or they're going to, you know, not stand up to the wear and tear that a two-month or a two-year-old baby you're going to have when they, first time they start gumming it. And that was really all of the, I think, all the highlights and the data I would like, I wanted to report to you all. Do you have any questions or comments or any other?
Great report. It's really, you're doing a lot of stuff over there.
First of all, I like your commitment in, in terms of the metrics. I mean, I think that's a really good approach and it makes it easy for us to comprehend what, what you're telling us. So thank you for that. And on IT, do you provide your own IT support or do they get that from, from the city or is that internal?
Yes, we have a man who manages our network.
Okay. I just wanted to get, the other thing, in terms of the facility itself, generally, I, I think the facility is an excellent facility, but I have been in there and I've mentioned this to Matt before. In terms of the age of those restrooms are, to me, they're, they're pretty old. And we're going through a capital budgeting process now. Does the library participate in that capital budgeting process or that's? Because I was thinking of the possibility of looking to, you know, get those renovated and-
So the city's responsibility is for the maintenance of the building, but not the day-to-day maintenance. So, so we did the HVAC system for the library. We're currently working on the atrium project for the library. So we do projects like that, something like bathroom upgrades. We would, we would help with upgrades, but if you're talking about a bathroom renovation, we haven't done anything like that.
I just, and I don't know how it would be done in terms of the funds, but I mean, the overall library looks very, very good. Those, those restrooms look like they're 40 years old, which they are. So I just point that out if there's any way to maybe get that into a long-range budgeting process to get those squared away, so. And the atrium pro, project, what, what's the atrium project?
Come on up. The atrium is the glass portion of the library there on the east side of it. It currently has a number of leaks in the, the glass and the frame system. So we have worked with an architect, Finkel Williams, to design a new, new atrium or a new roof and, and glass system for that. We are close to having that out to bid so that we can get that project going here before winter starts and get it completed.
Just let me know. I get a call on Sunday, "Hey, somebody's tearing the wall down, let's go."
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
How's the smoke-free camp is coming along?
We have to police it. I haven't had it, I think, I'm the only person who was verbally assaulted for asking someone to stop smoking. Everyone's been pretty cooperative, but I got, you know, a few choice words thrown in my face, but only one time. I think it's been working pretty well. Most people, when we ask them once, they cooperate. And we've been asking to go to the bench that's over in the corner to smoke over there. So, so far, I think so good. I, I know the number of cigarette butts has dramatically dropped. They were scattered around the place pretty, pretty regularly. I think we'll still find some there because people will walk up with a cigarette in their mouth and I see them looking at the sign and go, "Oh, they'll just do that." But yeah, I think it's been, it's been good. We have expected to have major wars over that because I know people-
You will for, for the first couple of months after that.
But it never really materialized. It was just a lot of cooperation, so.
Good. People cooperate, yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next item, review by the sidewalk advisory board. I see that we have five members. Come on up, gentlemen.
Come up, we got another seat up here. You can always pull up the chair.
Pull up some chairs. Come on, Phil.
Mayor and commission, from time to time, the sidewalk committee comes and just talks to the city commission about our sidewalk program, just refresh the commission of the public's view of how we do this, the process. So I'll turn it over to Mike Cooper, who, who staffs the sidewalk committee for the city and then also our dedicated sidewalk committee members who are here tonight.
A little bit of history for the sidewalk advisory board and committee. Back in the mid to late 80s, there were a number of studies that were done that involved citizen participation. And one of the single largest citizen desires was that it create or construct more sidewalks. So back in the 90s, when the railroad was abandoned, railroad tracks came out, there was a proposal for a trail system on the old railroad right-of-way. The proposal was not adopted and didn't proceed any further, but at that time, the commission did say that they would do what they could to support additional sidewalks and the construction of new sidewalks and, and everything throughout the city. So they've been doing a good job of that. In early 2005, the city did contract with PDH engineers to do a sidewalk evaluation and complete a report. And that report did include findings as far as the condition of the existing sidewalks, which intersections in town had ADA ramps and were, we had missing sections of sidewalks throughout town. With that, they created a map that we continue to use today to evaluate sidewalk locations and stuff through town. But as a result of that report, the, in 2008, the commission set up and recognized the sidewalk advisory board. It includes seven members. Five of them are here tonight to address the commission. The advisory board does meet on a regular basis and they're extremely involved in the long-term planning and the review of the current projects and stuff that are done. Then in 2006, the city adopted what is called the Sidewalk Cost Share Program, which is used to help residents as well as businesses in town as kind of a way to, to upgrade their sidewalks and everything. And the city participates in part of the cost of that. We get a number of requests for that every year and the city sits aside $25,000 a year for that program. So with that, I will let Bob and committee members kind of discuss how they handle looking at the projects, what they do, just their whole process as far as evaluating.
I think the most important part for us from you is, it's in the policy report, talks about how, how we choose which sidewalks that we rank the highest. And we've been working at this for 10 years and we've got a long way to go. Job security in this, in this group. So you can see, you know, number one is a sidewalk on a collector arterial street. We make those the priority streets because more traffic in general, more foot traffic. As a sidewalk service school, you know, if you've seen our early projects, we're all centered on the schools. But then we started talking about parks, public buildings. Does it provide a continuation? We talked about the railroad trails that we didn't do. We look at sidewalks as trails. An example of that might be Shrine Park Road from Muncie Road south to Eisenhower. There's houses only on one side of the street, but we put sidewalk in there about four or five years ago because that makes a continuous loop. If you really want to walk, jog, ride a bike, you can go up to Eisenhower and cross Eisenhower, down to 10th, back across at Muncie, or clear on down to Shrine Park and across. So we look at, at loops like that too. And then we look at the negative side too. I mean, we've talked about like LaCompton Road between 18th down the hill. That area really needs a sidewalk, but- That area really needs a sidewalk, but it'd cost a fortune to put it in. And that street's not curbed and gutted. We avoid, we, the very first project we did was on Grand, between what was then Harriet Wilson School and the high school. Part of that was curbed and gutted and part of it wasn't. And we found that there are considerable headaches when you put in sidewalks where there's no curves and gutters. You have to sometimes correct drainage problems and everything that really should be a street problem. That's not to say we never do, we were, never will do another one on a non-curved and gutter, but it's in our considerations, you know, is, does that area need it bad enough that we're willing to spend the extra money, what it really gets down to? So this, I think is the most important part as far as we're concerned from you. If you see that, that there's another criteria that you feel is more important than these, you need to let us know. You've seen, I think, lists, some of the projects we have done, Mike's got several things on that. And I think you've seen some of the lists of what we have in mind for the next couple of years. We basically have a five-year plan right now, but it will change. As we look at, you know, what is more important, we review it. Mike says we meet regularly. For the most part, we meet at least ten times a year. We meet monthly. We usually skip December and August, something like that. I've told the senior members of this table before, but I think the national legislature could learn from our committee. In the first place, the fact that five of the seven of us are here tonight shows that our committee is interested, and that's not to take away from the two that aren't, cause they're committed members. But the other thing I say over and over again is we don't always agree. But we've never had anybody get mad and stomp out. And compromise is not only not.
I would agree with anyone anytime.
He didn't stomp out.
He's the designated curmudgeon. When I say compromise is not a four-letter word, it's not even a five-letter word. So we, we compromise because we don't all agree. And we come to you with what we feel are the best choices, the best places to spend the money. We have seen, if they build it, they will come. We've had people say, why on earth would you put a sidewalk in there? Nobody walks there. Well, nobody walks there because there's no place to walk. Our very first project on Grand, it was shared with me that there was a city employee that lived along that street that was not against it. But he let it be known that he thought it was pretty darn stupid because nobody walked there. And after the sidewalk was put in, he discovered that, yeah, people in that neighborhood wanted to walk, but they didn't want to walk in the street. Mike has some information. I see, um, it's not really, he's reading the overhead and he's got some maps here with lots of little colored lines on it showing what has happened, where we've done new sidewalks in the last ten years. And, you know, how much footage, your mileage?
That equates to just like, that does equate to just under twenty-nine miles of sidewalks since two thousand and eight.
And I don't remember the original report that we had. You remember how many miles it said that were either completely missing or poor or fair that we, it was like a hundred miles. Now, we narrowed that some by deciding that Collector and Arterio Streets are goal, and we, we're not there yet. The goal is to have sidewalks on both sides of Collector and Arterio Streets. And other than that, one side, which knocks that number down some because it, and I tell people all the time, you look at northeast Leavenworth and at one time, a hundred years ago, there were sidewalks on both sides of the street everywhere. Why? People walk to work, people walk to school, they walk to the corner grocery store. You go up there now and those brick sidewalks have sunk into the ground in a lot of places. You can't even tell that they were ever there. But say you look at our housing and sidewalks and World War Two, everybody got a car right after World War Two. And you know sidewalks, you get in your car and go places. And, and we, the city government at that time, all of us were a little short sighted. And some sidewalks went in, but far less post-World War Two. And, and starting in the eighties and nineties, people started saying, how come there's no sidewalks in my neighborhood? And, and that's when the sales tax was passed. That was one of the promises that, that part of that sales tax money would go towards sidewalks. And you've all have been generous with us and allowing us to, to make a sizable bite out of it every year. Also want to reiterate what Mike said about the cost share. You all are aware of it, but if anybody that's watching on channel two, make sure that they understand that if you're thinking about doing a sidewalk project in your home or your business, give, give the city hall a call, ask for public works. It has to be approved ahead of time. Don't do the work and then come say, can you help us pay for it? Because there's certain things that have to be done. At a real small project, if you're just replacing a little panel, it may not, you may not think it's worth your time. But if you're thinking about it, here's a chance for some of your tax money to come back right in your own front yard. So.
Would this apply to the sidewalks downtown on Cherokee and Delaware and Shawnee? Because generally, I think they're in pretty good shape, but I mean, some of them are a little uneven and have cracks and things like that. So.
The most recent cost shares downtown, Mike, we did that, that down by ten penny?
Yes. Stove loss, right?
That was the biggest cost share last year. We had forty thousand dollars in cost share last year, did we not? He has a pleasure twenty-five, he had some extra money.
As far as right downtown, so we did ten penny, uh, there across from First National Bank, uh, Serp Pro.
But that's a bottom up thing from the merchants, you know, coming to the city?
They came to us and say, and I remember the sidewalk down there across from First National or Exchange.
Right.
Whatever it is nowadays, it was in bad shape.
Right, okay.
And the business owner saw it and he felt like it was detracted from his business. He came to us and.
Sure, that's good.
It's not, and in that process, like at the same time, we did a handicap ramp.
Oh, yeah.
Because they're on the corner. We do, if, if a cost share involves a handicap ramp, the city puts up the entire cost.
Two thousand and fourteen, you did a lot of those.
Well, downtown next to the Heritage Center is a terrible sidewalk along there. It's a tripping hazard. I see people tripping all the time.
That's what you get concerned about is particularly the tripping hazard.
And having gone door to door in north, north Leavenworth and the sidewalks are really bad tripping hazards. I don't know. You know, I know it'd be expensive to fix some of them there, but it's, it's.
Legally, those sidewalks are the responsibility of the homeowner. So if you trip, you know, you're not gonna sue the city. Or you might, but I'm pretty sure you'll lose. But if it's truly a hazard, it is the property owners. And we're replacing some of those, but I say there, there are so many that need to be done that.
Yeah, that's true.
The city at large can't do everything.
But if it's particularly egregious, like, and I haven't paid attention to it, but in front of the Heritage Center, I mean, can we, I mean, can we talk?
We have a lot of elderly people that go up and down there.
Okay. I'm just saying, for those that are really in that category, it may take, you know, kind of a two-way. And you're saying that we do, do that? So that's my biggest concern downtown. So.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
As Bob stated, the funding comes from a portion of the county wide sales tax.
Yes.
Which currently runs in somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and twenty-five to four hundred thousand dollars. That concludes design for that year's project or the, the next year's project as well as construction. The cost share program comes out of there and any inspection costs we have in it. So.
So you've got some tough decisions to make. I understand that in terms of priorities. I noticed that in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen, the, the amounts for the sidewalk cost share program were pretty high. Was there, was, was that, what was that a result of? I mean, it's.
I think there's no loss. Was it stove back free lot?
Some of it may have been carried over.
Yeah, it could be.
If you bid and you don't spend enough money one year, we, we carry over.
I just wonder, cause there's two years that are definitely different than the, the other years as far as that cost share.
It's a matter of timing, as much as anything, cause we spend, we spend it all. And we prefer to spend it as soon as we can, but it doesn't always work that way.
Yeah, we do currently have a request in from B and B Theaters for their sidewalk here on the west side of the building.
Now, have you all looked at Fifth Street, right in front of Potawatomi? It's like you have some sidewalk and then it just turns to like dirt, but across the street, it goes back into another sidewalk. Have you guys?
I don't think that's been on our radar, but I'll, we will definitely take a look at it.
And I know I brought this one up before, but I keep getting a complaint, Santa Fe Street.
Santa Fe from Santa Fe to the Shrine Park?
Yes, correct.
Without any, no curves and gutter.
No curve and gutter, yeah.
It's not that we wouldn't want to do it. It's just, yeah.
It does get a lot, you know, you see kids walking that to head school and.
And it's that big hill when they come up, all these kids in the middle of the street.
I know, working with you for the last nine, ten years, I appreciate the work the sidewalk committee does. You are a very dedicated group. You have a major impact on the city. Many of the commissions and the committees that we assign people to have an impact. But the sidewalk committee, planning commission, they have huge impacts on the city. Dedication you guys put into it and probably getting, you know, people sharpshooting you all the time too, saying, why'd you do it here, why'd you do it there? Yeah, that, that's part of it, but.
It's always a be in the chair, I get more of them.
But you got, one thing I would say, this committee is much, if not more than any other committee, does get down into the weeds of everything they're doing. It's not coming, oh yeah, let's see that, that's fine. I mean, there's, there's so much studying that goes on and, you know, as you said, you're not necessarily a hundred percent lockstep all the time, but you do come up with a solution that you're, that everyone seems to be agreeable with. Might not be everyone's solution, but I do appreciate the work that you do. It takes a big burden off this commission because I, I don't think that five of us have enough time to put into it that you, that you seven put in, five of you here, but the seven of you that are on there, because it is a time consuming job. And you probably know more about the walking trails in the city than, than most other people.
Well, we, we have, you know, decisions that we have to make because we'll have plans out there. And a good one is Twentieth Street where we took Tongki Road up to San Door. You know, it's needed it for a long time. We've got a nice sidewalk on the east side. But those who do walk from San Door, who's having to walk down Tongki Road are in it. And not only that, but when you get to Twentieth, they've got to cross over. So that was one of the big reasons that we decided to go that route and get it on the other side.
Plus the school, right?
Now, now they can, they can walk to school. They don't have to cross over Twentieth Street. And then when they got down to the school, then they'd have to cross over Twentieth Street again.
We did sidetrack, you guys sidetracked us now, now. I mean, we're doing, we're going around Broadway School that, that we didn't pick. But it was a concession to the developers and not, you know.
That's North Broadway.
Take my pocket, Mark. I say I'm probably. And a couple of years ago, a couple of years ago, we had the K Link projects, which the state paid fifty percent of fixing roads, but they required us to make handicap ADA ramps on all the intersections. And man, did I catch it from that. Who you guys spent all this money putting ADA ramps on Spruce and the sidewalk sucks. And they're right. And it's next year, I think we're finally gonna get around to doing one side of Spruce. We spent all that money on ADA ramps and, and Spruce is an arterial street and, and deserves it. But yeah, I, I got several people questioned my.
Some of these projects, you know, again, a little bit expensive. You take like up in the north, northeast section where we were doing sidewalks from fourth up to third, like on Miami and Old Sage. And it was, because that's where the, the buses come across and they pick up on third. So, you know, you've just got one block through there, but it becomes so expensive because you've got all these big old trees. And they have to come out. And when you're taking a bunch of trees out, it costs a lot more money to get your sidewalk.
And you stir up some stuff.
Yeah, they don't like type of trees.
Sidewalks and all that hundred and twenty year old low trees coming down.
I hate to lose trees, but on the other hand, I just paid to take one down, maple eyes apartments and, and some of those trees we took down was probably within ten years, the homeowner was gonna have to pay somebody. So they, they may have come out ahead on that. But yeah, we avoid that when possible, but it, the projects we've done, many of them really clean up the neighborhood. It's surprising how, when you put that sidewalk in, maybe you take out a few old scrubbing bushes or.
Yeah, I think our case study for that story is Thirteenth Street. We put the Thirteenth Street north from, north from the park all the way up to Metropolitan. And we put that sidewalk in and all of a sudden, trash gone, yards cleaned up.
I think a couple of things that we've talked about a number of times on the committee is to be sure that we get information to the commission in time in order for the commission to make decisions. So we get the most amount of projects done within the construction time from early spring until fall. So that's, that's one of the things that we work very hard is to get into that cycle so that, that can be done. The other thing is that we were very conscious of potential future projects because we don't want to put sidewalks in and then have them torn up. Ottawa is probably a good example of that, where we knew they needed sidewalks, but you also needed a street. And so putting sidewalks in on Ottawa, which, which is a priority for a lot of people, would have been a problem. And basically, we spending taxpayer money twice if we'd have done that. So those are two considerations that I think are very important is that what decisions we make and the information that we present to the commission is done in the most expedient way. And also, it's the best way to spend the taxpayers' money to accomplish what we want to accomplish.
And something you know, I really loved you because that was our number one project for several years, but it just didn't make sense for us to do it. And it was on the, it was on the five-year plan for what, twelve years? It finally gets, I know how a five-year plan.
Well, we get a lot of talk now and it's very important and it's violence from tenth to fifteenth. You know, we talk about we need new sidewalks along there, but there's no sense in us going in, putting sidewalks in when you guys in twenty, twenty, thirty years are gonna tear it up and put that new street in.
Yeah, frankly, we may, we may do something before you do on that one.
Yeah, the walking patterns are changing because of the new schools. And you're gonna construct another one, or the schools list is gonna construct another one. So you're gonna have middle school, fifth and sixth, the high school, Henry Leavenworth. It's gonna change the pattern. And so violence and, and limit are both becoming areas where we gotta take a harder look at it.
It does between, between limit and the school. As a matter of fact, that was on this last year's project. It was one block, two blocks.
One of the nice things about tying in to the schools is that we have found that the high school and at Henry Leavenworth is when we put sidewalks in, they extended on their own property. So we have a continuous sidewalk. The same thing with the high school. So it's a matter of two city ordinance, it's city units working together to accomplish our goals.
The other thing, when you see our, our five-year plans come to you, you'll, we, we always over-design. And by that, I mean, we will design more projects than the current year budget might be able to afford. And there's a reason for that. And, you know, we put them on the shelf. Cause if the design's done, the design's done. If we get good bids, we might be able to pull a couple of projects forward if we have the design work done. And we do that every year. So you will always see, I think, here in the last few years, we've always pulled.
Typically try to, to do more than what we can.
Piggy, piggybacking on the discussions in the last two or three minutes, are the projects for two thousand and eighteen, are they done?
No, they're not done. They're getting ready to start those projects.
Oh, okay.
It's kind of, it seems a little late this year, but the way the construction industry and stuff went, we actually benefited some from getting them out.
Some from getting them out so late, because a lot of the contractors have worked through all of their backlog of work, and we're looking for work, so we got some really good bids.
So there'll be work occurring in the next several weeks?
Uh, yeah.
Where, where will citizens see some major work being done?
It's the four block square around the old Broadway School.
The apartments there.
Uh, Marion on the south side of the high school from Grand to Ten.
The tennis courts. Okay, yeah, okay.
And then on Grand from, I think it's Sherman to Villas, yeah.
Okay, from the tennis courts down to Villas, yeah, okay.
The area Fifth and Pawnee was mentioned here earlier, as well as the.
Fifth and Potawatomi.
Fifth and Potawatomi.
Yeah.
And in north part of town, and a lot of those older areas, there actually are sidewalks, it's old brick sidewalks, it's overgrown and everything, so it may not look like there's sidewalks there, but they haven't been cleaned, and so it just, to do a sidewalk project in that area would be to remove the brick and come in and, and place new concrete sidewalk.
Who's responsible for it?
That's an important distinction, because in the northeast, sometimes you have people who don't want to lose their brick sidewalk, and we don't replace brick with brick. If we come in and put a new sidewalk in, we put in concrete.
We did that once on, uh, on.
Broadway and, uh, on Broad, yeah.
If we have someone that maintains their brick.
Right.
That people maintain in there.
If they main, if they maintain it, we're willing, we know that a brick sidewalk, frankly, is gonna be slippery and wet and the snow, and it can have all hundreds of little tiny trip hazards, but it has a historic appeal. And if the homeowners willing to maintain it, we will not tear that up and replace it. But the areas where the, the brick has just sunk into the ground and disappeared or falling apart.
Yeah.
And we're not gonna try to replace it with brick, it's way too expensive. People that have brick sidewalks and want to maintain them, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, the city has a stockpile of sidewalk type bricks. I mean, that's different than a timber brick.
Right.
And, uh, those are available.
Those are available with citizens, they need to make requests for it.
Know that, that's great.
It's no cost, man.
Yeah, no cost, yes. So you need to let us, they're, and they're good. They will use them for public sidewalk only, not private sidewalk.
Okay.
So you need to make the request, uh.
Define public versus private sidewalk.
Uh, anything going from basically the city right away back to your house would be considered private, any patios or anything like that, they're not available for that. But if it runs kind of parallel to the street, along the street, that's considered a public sidewalk.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, the, uh, you said, uh, certain areas are overgrown, and I was asking, who's responsible for keeping that area clean?
It is the property owner's responsibility to maintain all the sidewalks.
Okay.
All sidewalks.
Yeah.
New, old, brick.
Yeah.
Whatever. Do we enforce it, do we, you know, it's the same way when it comes to snow removal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
The ordinance says you'll have.
Now, now, Bob.
Put yourself on every pot.
Any other question?
It is, it's, it's the owner's responsibility, but we don't work real hard.
Or, or, and the business owner.
Yes.
And the business owner, yeah, same thing, uh, we have, we have, uh, contacted people around schools about snow removal, but, but, uh, I know City Lawrence, they'll find you, you know. So my main question to you, I mean, if you have questions for us, that's fine, but my main question is for you, then, do you see anything you would want to change as far as the, the criteria we use to, you may not agree with our grades always, I don't agree with.
You wanna leave that map out, can you leave that?
Oh, Bob, I think it's been working rather well. Yeah, we, we just check it up to the already back and forth, which is good, but we're getting a little bit completed.
I think Mike made enough copies.
There's enough copies, we're each coming.
I, I would.
We'd like to have one.
If you can take it home and study it.
I would just, just say, and we had to talk about it, and I don't know whether it's a specific criteria, but just downtown, if there's, you know, obvious area where it's, you know, a tripping hazard, um, I would just, however, that, I just think that that should at least get visibility, and, and so maybe, maybe it does with respect to how you have your priorities laid out, but that would be my feedback.
Well, if you look at the little lines, you don't see a whole lot downtown, and frankly, back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine, we did a major downtown program, and the commission said, hey, we're doing downtown, you guys back off. I don't mean to say that you're, so for several years, we didn't even look at that, also up northeast. There was a time when they said, oh, we're gonna have some major developments, so anything you do is have to get wiped away. Well, you can see there's some lines up there, because, but we had a couple of years where, where we stayed away from northeast, but yeah, I think maybe we need to look a little closer at some of the downtown.
I think one of the commission goals for public works was, uh, to look at possibility of street skate projects and everything for sidewalks and stuff, so.
I think that would be, that's my feedback, as one commissioner, so.
One thing the Sidewalk Committee is gonna be discussing and will probably bring before the commission to, to consider is, uh, a way to handle, uh, areas of sidewalk that haven't been, uh, constructed. We're kind of looking at, on new developments requiring sidewalks at the end of the two year maintenance bond on those lots that haven't been, had a house constructed on them, that the developer construct those sidewalks on those vacant lots.
Cool.
To, to keep from getting those areas where we don't have a, a sidewalk in a one lot area and stuff.
That's good. Like across the street from my house. That's the case study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A development that goes in and in two years, it's full up, well, it works, because you put a sidewalk everywhere, but.
A development with three or four lots that haven't gone in yet, and you don't have sidewalk in front of them, so sidewalk stops at this lot, starts at that lot.
Yeah, the lot's still there, it's still for sale, but it's been sitting there for ten years, twelve years.
Where is that?
Catwood Street.
Okay.
I'm sure there are other.
Yeah, I just, I just see that one every morning, so I.
Good morning, Tenth Avenue, yeah, Tenth Avenue on the, uh, west side there past those apartments, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
No.
No.
Mr. Carroll, you have anything to say?
Uh, usually I'm pretty quiet, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, no, there's one thing that I, I wanna extend, I'll extend an invitation, I know that all of you are busy, but as Bob said, we make at least ten months out of here.
Typically on the fourth Wednesday.
And we would be delighted to have one or all of them anytime there and see a little bit more how we spend the time. Another thing I, I have is the, our grading system, that each of us, when we start each, once a year, we have a, take all the streets that we're looking at, all the areas, some that may not be even, we know won't be graded, but they'll be there, and each one of us grades them five to one. Then we bring, bring them in, they get massaged, added up, kind of averaged out, and then we discuss them. And usually, it's very, very good, intelligent discussion, and that's where we come from with that. But we walk these streets, we drive these streets, as you can tell what's been said, we know these streets. And if you don't believe that you need a sidewalk, sidewalks are great till you start walking in the mud.
Yeah.
Oh, and the city grades streets, they grade it by the block, this block's one to five is a three and a half. Sidewalks, you can't look at it by the block, except the little, little tiny pieces.
Yeah. And sections.
And the study we had done back in two thousand six gave us all those little tiny pieces, which is helpful to us. But yes, we meet, right here, we meet at six o'clock, uh, typically on the fourth Wednesday.
And one other thing, you have this nice big sugar bowl that sits in the middle of this table, and you have a little spoon that you put a little here, a little here for your budget. And the next time, when you start with that little spoon, and you're not real sure where you're gonna put just a little more sugar, it could develop into a good sidewalk.
So Mark, give us some sugar.
Give me some sugar.
I'd rather. Now you see, but they don't like me to talk. We have fun in our meetings.
Any other questions for the Sidewalk Committee?
No.
Thank you for all your work.
Gentlemen, thanks for being here, and thanks for all that you did.
Appreciate it.
Take one home, study it till dark Saturday.
You feeling too good, Phil?
Steve, Steve.
Steve, yeah, chief.
Uh, next item is review current region multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
Public Works Director Mike McDonald will handle this item. All right, it's hard to top that for a segment, so. All right, this is, uh, the Region L Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. Uh, this is a plan that, uh, essentially is a requirement of FEMA to organize how the governments and across the country look at hazards that exist in their communities and how they're prepared to deal with them. The current plan was prepared, uh, fundamentally by, uh, Leavenworth County, uh, in two thousand thirteen, and that included, uh, Leavenworth County, Johnson County, and Wyandotte County, and every single government entity within the county, your school districts, uh, uh, water districts, any, any sort of government entity, uh, has a, has a piece of the plan. Uh, ultimately, the, uh, the plan ends up being about eight or nine hundred pages long, I didn't bring it down, but printed on two sides, it's about that thick. Uh, but it's, uh, it's fairly comprehensive. Uh, the plan is a national process, so there are going to be things they want you to think about that don't necessarily apply, uh, to, uh, Leavenworth or City of Leavenworth, uh, like, uh, title, uh, title surges and that sort of thing. Uh, but it is set up so that the, at the end of the day, you have, uh, have our, uh, little listing of typical disasters you should be thinking about, and what, uh, our city in particular is going to be doing over the long term to address them. Uh, Leavenworth County, again, uh, through emergency management, has coordinated an update of the plan, uh, and, uh, there's other things that we're doing, uh, but key, three key things were identified that the city commission needed to be, uh, involved in as part of that process. Uh, first is to ensure opportunities for the public to comment, as their comments are important. Uh, if there's, uh, citizens that wish to comment to you, or comment to staff, or have questions about this, they're welcome to, uh, come to our offices, uh, that we may have an opportunity for, uh, public to comment at our next meeting, we'll see how, how this works out. But the public, uh, public input in the process, uh, is an important part of the evaluation by FEMA as it goes forward. Uh, the second thing was to, uh, review the, I call it the prioritization matrix, and I think they might have another name for it, but it is a listing of the thirteen or so hazards and the priority order that we see them, and or they rank from high to medium to low type threats, and make some changes, uh, that, that, I'll talk about them briefly. And then at the back end of the plan, there's a series of mitigation strategies that the city adopted in two thousand thirteen. Uh, we'll review those, if the city commission incurs that, uh, these projects are done, or these projects are not done, we'll make those changes, and then based on discussions with, uh, Chuck McCallha's office, uh, we've added, uh, some other items for possible consideration by the city commission to be included into this. Uh, this is a lot of, uh, this is a lot of bureaucracy, but the truth is, is the bureaucracy actually works in our favor, uh, being, uh, the previous plan had the, uh, flood wall, this project in the plan at the community center, was a key part of showing that it was needed, had been thought about, and ultimately, uh, resulted in us receiving a substantial grant to construct, uh, the flood wall, which saved us an immense amount of time the last few times the rivers come up. Uh, it's, uh, it's, it's been a great, uh, great thing to have that flood wall, and it came out of, in large part, out of, uh, having it in this plan to start with.
When, when was that flood wall constructed, which year?
Two years ago.
Two or three years.
It's been about four or five years.
Okay, just one more.
And there's a, there's a whole maintenance schedule, we inspect things, and we crank the cranks once a year, and they check the, uh, check the different things, there's a whole checklist and a responsibility matrix, and all the things that you would see in a nice federal project, and we do that.
Is it just in front of the riverfront community center, or does it extend like a little further?
It's only on the east side of the community center, from the, uh, south corner of the racquetball courts, and extends on around to Cherokee Street.
Okay.
Uh, it's about four foot out of the ground and, I don't know, twenty feet in the ground, to keep the, the water from migrating and, uh, yeah, saves a lot of staff time having to sit up to deal with the flooding and the sandbagging and all those stuffs.
Mr. Kramer worked on that, I was, I was the biggest project, as assistant city manager, you had to work that thing through, work with the railroads and FEMA, every federal.
Yeah, you don't realize that most of the flooding for the community center comes through underground, and came up through the drain that way, and, and we have a slip skate in there now, we don't have to use the pumps like we used to, um, on the front end, so it's, it's, there's a lot more there than appears when you just hit the wall.
And over the last couple of weeks, we had not had, the flood wall would have come into the.
The, what had really saved us was, uh, at certain levels of flooding, is when we start activating sandbag filling, um, and, uh, round the clock monitoring.
Yeah.
And items like that, and pulling the plug out of, um, the stormwater drain and those kind of efforts that we don't have to do now.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, 'cause you can't install your plugs under the old system, and once the water gets over two or three feet deep, it's physically impossible to get the plug in. So you have to guess if the river's really gonna go as high as they forecast, so you can put the plug in, so you can protect the, uh, inside of the perimeter of your sandbags from the, the river backing up through the, the storm shore in, into the, into the compound, if you will.
Sure.
So that's been eliminated with this project.
That's good.
Uh, the, uh, prioritization matrix is kind of shown at the bottom of page nine of the policy report, you would think, on agricultural infestations to winter storm and all kinds of crazy things in between. And, uh, if you wanted to research that, the, uh, this is a short list of reading that, uh, you can, you can do.
Yeah.
There's a lot of background that went into this report, which is, uh, I guess is good. But if you, if you skip ahead to page sixteen, uh, this table is essentially what came out of the nineteen, uh, of the two thousand thirteen plan. Uh, there's no real surprises here as to, uh, what's the highest ranked things, are tornadoes, floods, winter storms, and windstorms. And the lowest ranking things are landslides, soil erosion, earthquake, and land subsidence. So, uh, uh, we as a staff have reviewed this and believe that this is an accurate reflection of things that we are, uh, likely to expect, uh, or likely to see in kind of the approximate order of priority.
The, uh, land subsidence, is that a sinkhole?
Yeah, basically sinkholes like in Florida, for instance, or if you have a groundwater pumping environment where the, the soil structure collapses over a large area.
Okay.
Uh, we did, uh, a requirement was to add two new threats to the matrix, first one is cyber threats, and the other is, uh, climate change. Uh, we took the liberty of identifying, uh, likely, uh, impacts to go into the, uh, matrix, rating each of these threats for probability, magnitude, warning time, and duration, and scoring them, uh, there's little multiplication factors that go in there. And cyber threats, uh, are kind of ranked in there, the two point three, which is, uh, below agricultural infestation and above expansive soils.
Those are so nebulous, both that and climate change, you're such nebulous categories, I don't know.
And, and climate change.
How you even rank them?
Climate change in our environment, uh, if it's a real, or if it's manmade, or if it's natural, whatever it may be, the truth is, we are not subject to any dramatic action, like if you were a low, a low lying community on the, on the ocean or something.
Right.
So it ranks absolutely at the bottom of the list with a one point three, which is under, uh, the land subsidence.
But it did make it on the list, which is, which is an important statement, I think, that, um, everything on the list, there could be more, so everything on the list has some type of priority.
Right, and that's important, in other parts of the country, of course, this could be completely different prioritization.
Sure.
Uh, but, uh, uh, we would ask, uh, we'll bring this thing back to the commission for a, uh, approval of this stuff. I believe it tend to be scheduled for next week, uh, to try to keep the county on schedule, but you can take longer if necessary.
Who's the report eventually go to, is it the state or?
Goes, uh, I think it goes to the State Department of Emergency Management and floats up to FEMA.
Okay.
Through there, and there, I forget how many regions there are in Kansas, but there's probably twenty something regions, multi-county type regions.
Okay.
A lot of projects that came out of this plan typically were school districts with safe rooms. A lot of projects that came out of this plan typically were school districts with safe rooms or hardened, uh, hardened shelters and community centers and that sort of thing for tornado type stuff. Uh, we, we ended up, uh, not doing those, but we did get a nice proposal.
Yeah.
So, uh, the mitigation projects that were identified in the 2013, uh, plan, they're actually copied back here in kind of fine print and sideways, uh, which is identify flash, uh, flash flood areas and address them in the planning process. We do that and it's an ongoing activity. Continue with our National Flood Insurance Program, which is floodplain management and flood insurance. We continue to do that. Uh, identify and acquire repetitively flooded properties using FEMA grants. Uh, we try to do that. Every once in a while, we get notified that there's the opportunity to acquire some properties and we've picked up a few over the years. Unfortunately, those opportunities never seem to be able to apply to, uh, things that we would like to acquire that people want to sell. It's always weird pieces of property, uh, but we picked up some along Miami Street and the eight hundred and nine hundred block, uh, several years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, now, so many of these buyout grants from FEMA are associated with properties that, that they have to have flood insurance have been repetitively flooded. So it's not just your house, if you live on Bean Lake and you get flooded every other year for ten years, if you don't have flood insurance, FEMA won't buy those houses anymore. Twenty years ago, they might have, but now you have to have flood insurance. But, uh, by having this, uh, type of activity in the plan, should there be a national initiative to do that, we can say, "Yeah, that's something we're working on." Uh, and it would be useful from time to time.
Like an infrastructure plan, right?
Right, yeah. Talking about that. A portable dam for a community center, eventually that's what morphed into the, uh, the wall and that project is complete. Uh, we had a similar request in for the water, uh, wastewater treatment plant for a portable wall. Uh, that's still an active request, but I don't know that the portable wall is the answer. There's some different technologies, some of those big bags and our other work that we've done at the treatment plant. Uh, but I would like to leave it in there in case there's the opportunity to do further, uh, flood roofing at the treatment plant at the, uh, through a FEMA grant. And a big one, another big one was constructing new animal control building out of the floodplain, which, uh, we did and it's complete. And, uh, so, uh, staff recommendation in this case is that, uh, the items one, one A, uh, two and four would remain on the list and we would confer that the others have been completed. The, uh, uh, other items, uh, Chuck suggested that we maybe think a little bigger. They really tried to restrict our focus five years ago to major things like we just talked about. Um, every school district in the district, in the, in this three county area put in for the same type of, of crazy FEMA grants. It ends up with safe rooms and different types of things. Uh, that was a little smaller, uh, focus than, uh, we thought it was gonna be. So, uh, we were to broaden our things and some of the suggestions that, uh, that the county emergency management, uh, thought could be included in the plan. And this is a list that was prepared by staff, is not, uh, necessarily all inclusive and certainly things on here that are, uh, found to be not appropriate can be deleted. Uh, but we identified, uh, Chuck suggested that we identify, we have a stormwater management plant with associated fees. This is, that's important. It shows you're taking your stormwater seriously. Coming out of wildfires, uh, California and elsewhere was to, uh, improve fire suppression and mutual aid arrangements, uh, particularly related to wildfires and review, update, and expand our mutual aid agreements. Uh, I wouldn't have thought of that, so it's nice to have somebody, uh, in the bigger picture mention that. Uh, active shooter, uh, improvements for, uh, facilities. That's unfortunately something that, uh, is a disaster when it happens. And that's a legitimate thing to include, uh, in there. Uh, construction and protection of critical infrastructure using stormwater and CIP funds. I have identified, uh, protect our sewers and stormshore lines from creek erosion, replace undersized creek and stream crossings with modern structures. That may ultimately result in, uh, something interesting happening. But we're doing that anyway, uh, slowly with the stormwater fee and other CIP resources. Uh, Chuck, uh, said that the work that we do where we, uh, measure rainfall and stream flow with our monitoring program was, uh, he said that's very important to put in there, uh, that we're paying attention to, uh, our floods and how the water reacts. And we use that in our thought process and design, so I've mentioned that. Keep your building codes current. And then, uh, I resisted this where I put it in, uh, this city participation in the FEMA Community Rating System, which is a process where you, if the community participates in certain types of activities, like we have floodplain manager, we have zoning, some other types of things, you can, uh, get like a sticker for your welcome to the city sign. And if you have a flood insurance policy, you, you can save fifteen to twenty-five percent on the premiums if you're in a, uh, community rating system community. The sad truth is, there is something on the order of twenty or thirty policies inside the city limits of Leavenworth of flood insurance, of which the city holds about half of them. So, uh, we'll work with CARLA to see if that's a meaningful amount of money to save for the effort to be invested. Uh, Chuck, uh, I know he was really interested in trying to get everybody signed up for it. I've resisted that because it seems like a, uh, fair amount of effort for a very low return. But I'd say I've mentioned that. So ultimately, uh, we encourage the commission to, uh, encourage, uh, public participation in the discussion of the plan. Uh, concur with the general ranking of the existing and new hazards and then, uh, concur, uh, modify the, uh, proposed additions to the mitigation plan. These will, if these are important to us to move forward, then there's a, the next step, if you will, is there's a, there's a paragraph or two written in the, the plan. We will not have that for you. That is, this is just to identify what's important to us and then the plan will hopefully develop that. I believe they want to have this completed by March or something on that order of twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Questions for Mr. McDonald?
I think it's a good rundown.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is review snow and ice control policy and supporting plan. Mr. Marks.
Well, that's Chris. He had him to take the, the mayor's seat here. If you think the sidewalk committee, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen here get, uh, has, gets sharpshitted, uh, people sharpshoot their policies, wait until there's a six to eight inch, uh, snowstorm.
Oh, yeah.
You know, many people say, "Well, why didn't they do it this way?" Yeah. There is a plan in place and please.
We all have, uh, have our, uh, snow removal, our snow and ice faults. Go ahead, Mr. Marks.
Well, good evening, Mayor, City Commission. Glad to be a part of this. Uh, we're back again, another annual event. Mr. McDonald's gonna go ahead and explain in detail what we do and why we do it.
And the things I get wrong, Curtis. But the, uh, City of Leavenworth, uh, snow control plan, this particular document had its origins in about nineteen ninety-three with Wes Ludwig, uh, retired, uh, Colonel from the fort was, uh, was really interesting to work with as operation superintendent. He said, "We gotta have a plan for this." So he kind of put this together and we've been modifying it and improving it ever since then. Uh, there's no fundamental changes in the snow plan from, uh, last year to this year, but I wanted to kind of run over, uh, the, the basics of what we do as we try to get review with the commission annually about this time, uh, the specifics of the snow, uh, snow and ice control plan. Uh, talk about, uh, how we interact with the media, both the local and regional, uh, through, uh, Melissa's office. And that we do have, reach out and have interactions with our, uh, other governments, everything from Fort Leavenworth, Leavenworth County, the highway department. And we also go through a series of, uh, of practice runs with our equipment and our employees to get them trained up. The, uh, key things on the snow plan for, uh, day-to-day is there's, uh, uh, the only person that can declare a snow emergency is the city manager or the chief of police. And we would only do that if we believe that the snow is gonna be, the snow ice is gonna be so dramatic that will, it will adversely impact our ability to, uh, deal with it. And then the second thing is there are emergency snow routes in town. Uh, there's a listing of them and a map in the, in the book. Those are streets that, uh, uh, if a, uh, snow emergency is declared, you have two hours to move your car or it's subject to being, uh, being towed. And it's not the towed around the block, nice tow, it's the towed to the tow lot where you gotta pay money to get your car out. Initially, that sounds kind of harsh, but I think people have found that, gosh, if I move my car around the corner, they're gonna plow next to the curb. They're going to do all the nice things I wish, uh, that they would do for everybody, but I'm on a snow route, they'll do it for me if I just move my car. And, uh, we get pretty good compliance with that.
How many, uh, in the last three years, how many snow emergencies have been declared?
In the last three years? I don't like that one.
In the last three years. But in the last, in the last five years, we, we had two or three in one year.
We had, uh, three eight-inch snows in March in twenty fourteen.
I think, I think so. It was pretty awful.
Yeah.
And those, uh, we, I think it was a snow emergency for half a month.
So it does, I mean, it does happen repetitively. Last couple of years, you've had three mild winters, but.
Yes, they have. Uh, we have, uh, we're blessed with, uh, good equipment and, uh, people that are trained to use it in the, the day-to-day snow operations. Uh, we have three classifications of storm. Uh, there's the level C storm, which is up to three inches, a B storm is three to eight, and over eight is an A. Uh, if we have the over three level storm, we will activate our twelve-hour shifts and we'll have a call, uh, someone at the service center, a, a real person that answers the phone. And we go to our, our twelve-hour shifts. Uh, Curtis and, uh, Foreman Becky Beaver, they have a, a pretty decent arsenal to choose from. We have two large standing trucks. Uh, we have, uh, three single axle dump trucks and then two flatbeds with small plows for dealing with cul-de-sacs or really narrow streets. In addition to three to four pickups with plows that we use to clean up huts and ends. We have our snow on order. We have, um, uh, there are people who've been practicing with the, with the snow. I think this is the earliest snowfall on record or something on that order from, was it yesterday morning or whatever?
Yeah.
So, oh, that's not, just not good. There is, uh, a lot of information in the, in the snow plan. Couple of things that come up every year is, uh, I never see the guy that watches me plow my driveway out so he can call you in right away before I'm inside to plow it shut. Where do you park him? Uh, we, uh, we have complaints all the time about the city comes along and plows my driveway shut as soon as I plow it. Uh, that's not on, uh, we don't do it to you personally, we do it to everybody. It's what, it's what our plan is. The basic operating plan in a snowstorm is we plow, uh, all the collectors and arterials. Plow, plow, plow. When it gets ready to stop snowing, then we start putting the salt down. And when we finally get the salt down and the, uh, arterial streets cleared out, then we move into the residential areas. And, uh, by the time we get that done, the res, the snow's gonna stop. People are out clearing the driveways out and that's when we come by to help them. And, uh, so I would, uh, say, "I'm sorry if we do that." Uh, if you think through which way the snow plow usually comes, try to plow the snow, uh, not on that, but when you shovel your driveway out, don't put the snow on that side. Put it downstream so it doesn't come back in your driveway.
Right.
Like that. Yeah. That's true. Uh, we, if we damage mailbox, kindly let us know. Uh, we've found most of the weak ones over the years, very few, very few lately. There are, uh, let's say twenty-four, uh, twenty-four hour, answer the phone with a real person. Uh, medical emergencies, we get calls from, uh, from residents, uh, "I'm, I've got a medical condition. They may have to send the ambulance here any minute. I don't know. It could happen any minute." And we say, "Well, we understand that. Thanks for letting us know." If we have a medical emergency and you have the ambulance coming, uh, we will have the police or fire, uh, lead the way to your house and we'll be right there with them. Uh, and so we will pull a truck off if the ambulance or fire has to get somewhere.
To clear the, clear the path.
But we, we don't have a list of medical, uh, medically sensitive locations that we go deal with. Try to coordinate with the schools. Uh, there's nothing more frustrating than to spend a good part of your time clearing out all the streets and stuff around the schools so everyone can get to the school. And the morning the school says, "Oops, so we're not gonna have class tomorrow." So we, we work on that pretty hard to make sure we're speaking the same language. And, uh, we have a, a plan, uh, after we get the collectors done, the residential streets done. We have all these crazy parking lots downtown, they're on our list to do. They're kind of third down on the list of priorities. And then fourth down on that is efforts, "I'll quit snowing," and we've got everything else done and we, we'll find, uh, that we don't plow snow downtown. We labor raise the plows up and just drive through it, 'cause you can't plow anywhere that's gonna make anybody happy. You just leave it where it falls. And we will, uh, light snows, we can kind of send in the little trucks or the pickup trucks and kind of push it around into a pile and deal with it. The larger snows, we just leave it there and we'll come in typically the night after it quits snowing and scoop up the snow and we haul it off and stockpile it. That's, uh, real production. We haven't done that for a while.
Yeah, it's something to see.
Yeah, think about that.
Uh, but, uh, the, the business owners, you know, if you come in and plow the snow up in the, on the sidewalks, they hate you and if you leave it in the street, they hate you. And we have a lot of, uh, new apartments downtown where there's cars parked on the street where it's twenty-five, thirty years ago, there was hardly anything after the bars closed. Your clean shot down Delaware, there was nothing. Uh, that's not the case anymore. It makes it a little more difficult.
Mike, two things. Can you hit on the GPS in the trucks? And then also, um, when we use contractors?
Thank you. We do have, uh, GPS equipment in at least two of the trucks and we're working on a plan to get it in the rest of the trucks so we can keep track of, uh, where they were, where they are, how fast were they going when they sprayed snow up twenty-five feet into the front of your house? Uh, it may not have been us, believe it or not. There are people that have, uh, commercial snowplows that feel good pushing snow fast. Uh, they will, they will slush it up and it wasn't us. We weren't in that neighborhood. That does happen. We're driving into people's yards. We'll figure out which truck it was. Our, our, uh, employees are pretty good about reporting that, "I hit a mailbox. I drove into the yard. I hit a car." Uh, we don't like to hear those things, but I'd rather hear them when they happen than, like, the next day.
Right.
So the GPS, uh, they are becoming less expensive, uh, to buy and easier to use. The, the user interfaces are much easier now than they were even two or three years ago on the information that worked for us. The, uh, contractors, uh, in the past, uh, if the city plows the snow, uh, down on the commercial or the collector arterial streets and there is, uh, snow to be plowed in the residential areas, if it's too much for city forces, we will, uh, we have contractor resources or we can call in local contractors. They have pre-assigned work areas and we'll clear the residential streets. We pay for that. But the standard in residential streets is different than collector and arterials, which are curb-to-curb. Residential streets are, uh, to the best of our ability, one pass up and one pass back. And if there's cars, it might be up and back in the same track.
Yeah.
And we're not curb-to-curb and, uh, this causes some consternation when we plow snow under a car and then it freezes. Uh, that's, that's the way it is. But that, uh, starting with, uh, with Ed Davis, he, uh, he, it bothered him considerably that we paid a pretty good chunk of change to have the contractors plow the streets and he kind of refocused our efforts, that the city ought to be able to plow the residential areas. And, uh, we have hit contractors out maybe once in the last three years.
Because of the mild winters.
Yeah, we've had three mild winters, so we haven't tested it under a lot of strain. But, uh, our initial thinking going into this is we intend to plow, uh, if we have the resources or all functional, that we would intend to plow the residential streets ourselves and, uh, not rely on contractor, uh, labor. But they are out there, they have contracts in place to do that. It's, uh, that's, it's not cheap, but it's, and what we like to do is get things plowed up so people can get out and either go to work, uh, or go sledding, I guess, is kind of what happens, or go shopping.
If we employ the contractors, is there a requirement for them to have GPSs?
Uh, we've, I think they basically do. We don't have access to it yet, but we're working on, on that. They've, they've adopted that technology for many years now.
And if we do that, don't we send out usually Justin or Wes Richard Cooper? And they, uh, we send somebody a four-wheel drive vehicle that essentially verifies their work.
Yeah, we count, we count their equipment. We look at, uh, if they've missed any, uh, pieces of their side sections. So, uh, they'll go back and get it, uh, or if they've moved on too far, we'll have one of our forces go back and pick up if we missed a block or a corner or something like that. But we do, when we have the contractors out there, we do have to have. But we do, when we have the contractors out there, we do have to have someone inspect them to make sure we're getting what we paid for.
Sure. Curtis and his team have done some training with parks employees and wastewater employees.
That's great.
So that, and most of the trucks that we've purchased over the last five to ten years have been able to put a blade on them. So we have more, more city employees able to, to push it up.
But you have done the training?
Yes, yes.
Because some, you know, I, I heard last year when I was campaigning, I would hear, just generally, that sometimes damage to curbs and things like that, and I know it's not a, not a perfect world, particularly when the snow's, you know, a few feet high. But, but you do have a training program for our, for folks in terms of operating the snow.
Right, we go through it every year. We, prior to each winter, we make sure that we're prepared and if we have new employees, it's a priority to get those, get them trained up as well.
If, if, and the goal is to get the employees in tune with where the obstacles are. If there's a high mountain or goofy curb. Like we've pointed out to the ones that were working around Second Street, that we got brand new, shiny, new curb around that brand new shiny new bridge. Don't even be hitting that.
Yeah, yeah. The curb is where, yeah, where I kind of got some feedback on.
But unfortunately, it does, it does happen, and it'll, it can scar it or chip it and occasionally break it. Not all that often we will go back and fix a broken curb unless it's a big chunk out or something like that. It's kind of a prioritization thing. But that, that's the goal of this early season training, is to let people know where their obstacles are and how to turn the corners so they don't hit things.
Yeah.
And, and you know, we've hit one car unfortunately, we kind of sliced it open like a sardine can with the end of the blade, so you can, you can do a lot of damage with one of these things.
Yeah, absolutely.
So as a citizen, I can call in. Call in and request to give my street a plow.
You can, I don't know, I don't know that you give, get special prioritization.
We'll be right there.
If you call in as commissioner, we might be able to have. But seriously, if, if you think your street was missed, kindly have your constituents call service center and say, I live at this address, I don't think they're on my street. And between GPS and other people, we ought to be able to figure out. Yeah, we do miss some.
I can't believe it, I mean, every time, I'm on a dead end street and it gets hit really fast. I mean, just like, just like you would think it'd be the last street in town, so you guys must really get out there because.
Do you guys target certain areas at a time?
We have prioritization, it's outlined in your book, where you focus on emergency snow routes. The arterial and collector. We focus on that, we stay on that until it's clear. And every storm, it's important to reiterate, every storm is different, has its own characteristics. So if a storm hits and it's going to continually hit, we might slide into, well, that's a bad word. We might focus on contracting. Where they can, you know, they can assist us. But if we think it's going to maximize at three inches, as outlined in your book, and we can classify it legitimately as a level C storm, then we'll go ahead and hit emergency storm routes, keep them clear, and then focus by grid.
We also have a prioritization with public safety facilities, school districts, library, that sort of thing to try to, where do you go next? Well, here's, here's kind of where we try to focus on. And in a general sense, we're down to basically two contractors. So if we have contractors working, they're going to work basically, I think they, they choose to go from north to south. One is East of Tenth and one is West of Tenth. In the past, we've had three or four, but they've all, some of them are no longer in business and some of them said it's just, it's too stressful. Because a lot of time their employees are, have already been laid off for the season, who do you have? Call back. But we do have contractor resources. And then even, even if we have, say, just two contracting firms, we do have this kind of emphasis from a few years ago. We should have resources that we can go into the grids and work the other way. So we will, we will work our best to get into residential areas if we're not overwhelmed on the collector and arterial.
And also if we have hotspots, which we always do in every storm, we have two trucks. Mr. McDonald mentioned that earlier, that we can send them directly in to residential areas where there are hotspots, where there's hills, bridges, overpasses.
We have, we have a list of kind of trouble areas, if you will, hotspots. And we will send these trucks in, the hills on the shady side of the, streets on the shady side of the hill or known terrible roads, I don't know why they ever got built. And some of these places that you just can't get in or out safely, try to dress those up front with the smaller, with the smaller trucks.
Who takes care, I'm sorry. Who takes care of Centennial Bridge, is that the state?
That's the state.
State, okay.
Metropolitan, yeah.
And metropolitan.
And metropolitan.
The state is responsible for all Metropolitan Avenue and Fourth Street, south of Lymn. And also Spruce Street, west of Fifteenth Street. That's not to say that we haven't actually kind of plowed some of that when they're behind from time to time. But we don't make it a priority unless it's a complete gigantic storm. And like I say, the fort's going to release everybody. And they, they don't do it all at once anymore, and now they kind of stagger it. But if, if we know everybody's leaving town, we'll send out a truck to make sure that our road or the state's road, whatever it is, they can, they can hit the highway and be gone.
I have one other question, and you may have covered it, but the pre-treatment policy in terms of pre-treatment of roads, anticipating a storm that's coming, would, I mean, generally would. I mean, I think, I've seen you do it, so I just, that's just part of the normal SOP, standard operating.
Right, again, depending on the nature of the storm. If it comes down wet, when you pre-treat with pure salt, you don't want to pre-treat.
Right.
Because it's going to wash out the road. The conditions have to be right, but we do try to prepare and.
It's less than.
Do you guys, because we're actually discussing a different approach, which I haven't talked about, using salt brine, something that actually absorbs to the, to the roadway a lot better than salt. Salt bounces off. The brine allows it to stick and adhere to the road, and you can put it out to twenty-four to forty-eight hours ahead of time and walk away with the storm in.
And that's good down to what, twenty-one degrees or something?
The salt brine goes down to, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's lower than fifteen degrees. And if you even mix it with the calcium chloride or a magnesium chloride to get it even for colder temperatures, the calcium chloride is more corrosive, which we'll talk about. Magnesium isn't, that's corrosive and dangerous to the environment. EK's stepping up, they want you to get away from salt right now so eventually I can see it evolving into a salt brine treatment. So, salt brine is basically twenty-three percent salt with the water, so.
And we do try to pre-treat, particularly if the ice is coming in, if we're not going to have a rain event. If everything's cold and it's going to be freezing rain or something show up, we'll try to get out in front of that because that's been showing to be real effective. If it's turning from rain to snow or rain to ice, you gotta kind of time it right and hope you get something. And I intended to mention, we've, we've switched from the salt sand mix to all salt. I think we mentioned we were talking that salt purchase. It's, it's cleaner, it's easier to control, and I think it's more effective. The, the only thing the sand gives you is some traction perhaps, and we do have some sand, but not much. But the, the salt gives you, I think, just as much traction when it's really cold as the, as the sand does.
And the sand is pretty nasty.
And if we go to, if we have an ice storm, it's important to mention as well, that's a level A storm, so we go into that phase.
Shifting, people on the phones.
And then we had the freezing fog, and we actually put that into the manual download, if you read that.
I think, I think what we all know is there is a plan in place. There's been a lot of thought, there's a lot of training. They update this continuously, make it, try to make it better every year. But every event is different, takes a lot of Kentucky windage to make this thing work. And when you're done with it, somebody's going to Monday morning quarterback you every time. And that's just part of the deal, and we all know that.
It's the nature of the beast.
It's, it's a very tough business. When we get hit with these events, it's, it's tough.
And it's, it's a serious business, but in some parts of the country, they don't even get out of bed when they get eight inches of snow. That's just, they just deal with it without doing anything like we're just talking about. So it's, it's all in local expectations, and we try to do our best to, to meet your, your locals and your community's expectations.
But just two new commissioners, you will get phone calls.
Okay. That's good to know.
From your, no, why haven't I done this?
That's why you have this.
Bedtime reading?
Curtis mentioned one other brief thing. We, we do have some roads that we have, that we have, so these are just too dangerous to plow. That's a shiny street from what, Twenty-first to Twenty-second. And there's a corner off of Santa Fe.
Hospital San Alvin.
Santa Fe is really a dead little. Yeah, and we will close that too. At least we're supposed to.
I mean, yeah, there are a lot of hilly, there's a lot of hilly terrain in Leavenworth, right? I mean, that's challenging with respect to snow recall, so.
So please, please ask questions before, during, or after a snowstorm. We'll let you know what we did and why.
Thank you so much.
Couple, I mean, you brought it up, but the shady side of the hill, for example, Twentieth Street. You're going south to north as you're coming up from, let's say Nineteenth Street Terrace to the top of the hill. You get that scrape, temperature's ten degrees, but the sun's out, that'll melt down nicely. The, going down the hill from La Compton to Spruce, scrape that perfectly. And it's fifteen, twenty degrees, it's still, you can't get it because you don't get that radiant heat.
That poor light pole's been hit at least four times.
Delaware Street, between Sixth and Fourth, from December first to February first. You won't even cast a shadow on that street because no sun ever hits it because the angle of the sun, the buildings are so high. So even though you scrape it, there's always going to be residual snow there, you don't get any radiant heat. So we have other places like that. It's not you not scraping, it's just, you know.
It's a, yeah. You may recall as you go in north on Twentieth Street, as you get halfway down the hill, we had an ice problem there a few years ago. Couple of these projects that we've done the last few years have hopefully addressed that. We haven't had water running out like we had before by some substantial drainage improvements. So doesn't mean you should drive faster or just continue to drive safer.
Get through it faster that way.
So that water was coming from creeks that were.
It was water running down the hill that was not draining away efficiently. The roadway was built in ninety-seven, and I think some things had silted in or filled in. We added some inlets and a, and a big crossroad pipe and some other things. Seems to have been effective the last couple of years.
Any other questions for Mr. Marks or Mr. McDonald? Thank you very much, and thanks for this.
Thank you.
We don't have any snow events, but we don't know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We would need to go into a special meeting before we do that, set comments among commissioners. Commissioner Batter?
I don't have anything tonight.
Commissioner Dediggy, Commissioner Wilson?
Yes, this upcoming Saturday from ten to two P M. at the Pioneer Career Center. That's going to be the Twin City Initiative. It's going to be free advertising for small businesses, nonprofit organizations. We're going to be giving away food, clothing, and just come out in a great time of fellowship, laughter and fun. You get to meet your neighbors. Lansing, Kansas, we're going to be working together collectively to serve the community. Make sure you get that in the newspaper.
Commissioner Griswold? Just to like to announce to the citizenry that podcast number three, I think the mayor and the city manager went ahead and did that yesterday, the fifteenth of October. I listened to it before I came for the meeting. About ten minutes long and six or seven subjects covered very well. So you can get to it by going to the city's webpage, the YouTube URL down at the bottom of the page, or you can get it via iTunes, right? And then Melissa puts it out via Facebook and Twitter. And maybe Instagram, I don't know, but. So it's, it's good.
Thank you.
You'll be doing Facebook Live soon, aren't you?
Uh, no, I'll make that. I've got a face for radio.
You have a voice for radio, that's for sure.
We need a motion to go into a special meeting. Motion second to open a special meeting, begin voting, Mr. Griswold?
Aye.
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 Passes five zero, we have a need for a, an executive session. I don't expect any action after the executive session, and I'll make the motion. I move that City Commission recess to executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters, exception per KSA seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen, subparagraph B, subparagraph one, in order to discuss the city manager contract renewal. The open meeting to resume in the city commission chambers at eight fifty, by that clock, by the city commission, by the clock in the city commission chambers. Second motion, second. Mr. Batter, voting.
Aye.
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 Aye.